I'd like to call to order the Joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting. It is 6:00 PM on August 7, 2024. Welcome, everybody, on Zoom, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, I would look for the Planning Commission to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda for tonight.
I'll make the motion. This is Scott.
This is Barb. I'll second that.
Motion's been made, and second, I'll call for the vote.
Scott, aye.
Barb, aye.
Robin, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Bethany, aye. Sorry.
Okay, now, we will look for the motion to approve the July 17, 2024 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Can I ask a question before we make a motion?
Sure.
So, it would, being the new guy, in our discussion at that meeting, there were a couple of ordinances that did not fall under the scope of the Planning Commission, basically the septic and the large animal ordinances that we had a rather lengthy discussion and some comments and questions by the commissioners. Should that be in the meeting minutes, or is it not to be in the meeting minutes?
We can certainly add them. Anything that you feel that was discussed in the meeting that you would like to have recorded in the minutes, you just let us know here or email me, and we can have that added before the approval.
Okay.
Would you like those comments added? Because it's recorded, you can go back.
Yes.
Yeah, so we can then make the motion with the comments added, right?
Yep.
Okay, so then I would make the motion to approve the July 17, 2024 meeting minutes with the addition of the discussion of the septic ordinance and the large animal ordinance. I think Councilmember Haglund had some great feedback and FYI on that.
Yes. Is there a second?
This is Barb. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve the minutes with the addition of the septic and the large animal discussions that we had. I will call for the vote.
Scott, aye.
Barb, aye.
Robin abstain.
Okay. Bethany? I think she's frozen.
Bethany, aye. Sorry, my thing's... Yeah, I'm frozen.
And Lynn, aye. Next, we will move to the public open forum. I don't see anybody in the audience, anybody else online that might want to address. If not, we will move on to the public hearing, and I will turn it over to Eleanor.
Why, thank you. I'm first going to read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on August 7, 2024, at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as parties may be heard. The hearing will be conducted in person and by interactive technology at the Columbus City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Minnesota, to consider a city code housekeeping amendment to Chapter 7A to improve formatting. A full copy of the proposed ordinance is available for review during regular business hours in the city administrator's office at the address listed above or viewed on the city website. Members of the public interested in attending in person, monitoring the meetings, or wanting more information, should contact city offices at 651-464-3120 or visit the city website at columbusmn.us. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received.
Perfect.
This particular ordinance, though I did present it last time at Planning Commission, was mostly heralded by Dean Johnson, so if, Dean, you would like to make any comments about this?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, perfect. Does anybody on Planning Commission have any questions?
Scott, Barb, any questions?
I don't have any.
Robin?
No questions.
Okay.
Okay.
So, if there's no... Nobody here to give input on this, per policy, we need to put the recommendation off until the next meeting and do our discussions at the next meeting.
Did we open the public hearing?
Oh, sorry, we didn't. I just did the public forum, and there was nobody here. So, the public hearing is open, and if anybody have... There's nobody here. There's nobody online. So, do you want to run through this?
Since we already discussed this particular ordinance, you can close the public hearing and recommend it to City Council for approval if you would choose to do so, or you can hold it off for another discussion.
Okay.
Sorry.
Everybody okay with that?
I have a question. So, did you get your... The questions that I sent to you answered?
For the next one, yes.
Okay. Oh, you're just doing the first one?
Yes.
Okay, so, does any of the Planning Commission members have anything with the changes that were made?
No, I have nothing.
Because Barb, I don't have any questions.
Okay. So, we will close the public hearing, and I will look for a motion from a Planning Commission member to recommend approval and send it to the City Council meeting next Wednesday, August 14, for approval.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve.
This is Robin. I'll second.
Robin, second. I will call for the vote.
Scott, aye.
Barb, aye.
Robin, aye.
Bethany?
Bethany, aye.
And Lynn, aye. So, that will be recommended to the council next Wednesday, August 14, 2024, for approval with the changes that were made.
Okay.
You'll need to open the public hearing.
The second one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, we'll open the second public hearing, which is Ordinance 24-03, Chapter 7B, Sign Regulations/Housekeeping Amendments, pages 10 through 19.
Perfect. I got to go through the whole notice again. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on August 7, 2024, at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as parties may be heard. The hearing will be conducted in person and by interactive technology at the Columbus City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Minnesota, to consider a city code housekeeping amendment to Chapter Regulating Signage. A full copy of the proposed ordinance is available for review during regular business hours in the city administrator's office at the address listed above or viewed on the city website. Members of the public interested in attending in person, monitoring the meetings, or wanting more information, should contact city offices at 651-464-3120 or visit the city website at columbusmn.us. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received.
Thank you, Eleanor. So, again, there's nobody here to come forward for the public hearing, nobody online. Any of the Planning Commission members have any discussion on the changes? Okay.
Aye.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
There were a few comments made by other people, other council and planning commissioners earlier, so I am going to quick run through the changes that we are going to add. I discussed a couple with Dean prior to the meeting. In Section 7B 302, on page 11, A1, on the second line, it does say, "A sign is permitted for each suburban residential subdivision." That is old language that we are going to turn into just a lowercase residential subdivision because that's what we're talking about. It's not a formal language anymore, it's just a residential subdivision. There was a question on Section B of that same page, same section, of Prescribed for the Community Commercial District. We can change that to the whole section because the Community Commercial District is lumped together with a bunch of other ones, or we can just keep it the same. I think either works if we have to change the section number, we would have to remember to change that back, or we can just keep it as Prescribed for the Community Commercial District, and they'll go to that section. Any questions? Okay. For the Mixed Use High Density Residential District, there is a section that mentions apartments, condominiums, and cooperatives. We can add senior housing to that as well because it is a different description in that district and would also be a part of that section.
What page is that on?
Page 12, sorry. Right above Commercial Development, that's highlighted under Section 7B 303B, right above that, it's mentioning wall signs on apartments, condominiums, and cooperatives. We will also be allowing that on senior housing, and it's defined differently in our code, so we might as well throw it in there for clarity. There are a couple of other little typos and things that were pointed out that we will be changing in the next draft of this for clarity reasons, including on page 13, the Horse Racing District, starting in A3, the Running Aces Harness Track and Gaming Facility. They've changed their name, so we will be using their new legal name, Running Aces Hotel and Casino, for all of the times that Running Aces is mentioned in this for clarity reasons. And I think that was it, as well as a couple other small typos and clarity things for this housekeeping amendment, and that would be in the next version of this draft for you to review.
Eleanor, I have one quick question.
Yes.
Of the yellow highlights, is that changes that were already made?
Yes, so the yellow highlights, we used instead of underlines for this one.
Okay.
Because it was a lot of... The original chapter, if you go to page 12, Section 7B 304, those were all split up into different sections, but they all had the same information. They also had the wrong zoning titles because the district's names had changed, and same with their... We did a whole rezoning, and we had never changed the section. So, if we were going to do a red line, it would be about, like, 16 pages of crossouts. Thank you. So, highlighting kind of worked a little bit better for this one. All right, perfect, thanks.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? I think there were just a couple other things that I don't know if you had a chance, but I just want to, in my own knowledge, understand them. So, in the Horse Racing District, I also, besides the name, I didn't know if... I can't remember when this was written. I don't think they had the hotel. So, there was a few things in there that I wondered that we would need to change because of the hotel. One of them had to do with a sign and requiring the primary building to face a public street, which the hotel does not, but it does have a sign, and I wasn't sure if this needed to be addressed in the ordinance or if we addressed that in their CUP PUD. I don't know, but I'm just thinking that we probably haven't looked at this since they built the hotel, and maybe we need to.
I will comment briefly that we did review this as a PUD and considered waivers rather than...
Okay.
I think when the hotel was built, the primary waiver was it had no access. It was surrounded by the rest of the property. In terms of the signage, we had examples, but there weren't any sign permits that were available at that time, and now they've been approved, I'm assuming administratively, when the hotel went in. If your question is whether or not we need to make new reference to other potential facilities, they do own a lot of property, which seems like they're going to do some more developing. I think that'd probably be the time that we'd go back and say, "This isn't written exactly the way it is." But I think when the hotel was approved, without the details, nobody paid attention to the sign ordinance at the time. And so, as Eleanor said originally, the whole intent here was to get rid of all the references to old zoning districts, and they were all identical. It's just that as we expanded them, we added them to that sign ordinance. The other yellows, you see the word setback all the time. It was originally in this ordinance, when it got codified, that word became one word, setback. They're two different words, and that's the only reason it's highlighted. One's a verb and one's a noun. Anyway, I think, yes. So, most of these were intended to not scare off either the billboard industry. The only changes that were included in that section made reference to a zoning district name that was outdated, and we really did the same with Running Aces. I'm glad you come up with a new name. We should do that, and wherever the old reference is, we would do that. But otherwise, these yellow notations are just to indicate, and it's usually in titles, but it was also, we may have eliminated an old obsolete zoning district, and that's just like a placeholder to let you know where it was. It was my error for not catching the term suburban residential, and as Eleanor said, we would just change that capitalized suburban residential to any residential subdivision is entitled to these variety of signs. And I don't know if you had another question, if that... Did we talk about the senior to be added into?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that additional clarification is fine.
Okay, and then, I had one other question, and it was on Section 7B 306. So, am I getting ahead of you, or were you going to not bring that up? That was a question about...
Yes.
So, my question is that it reads, "One on-premise freestanding sign is permitted for each commercial industrial parcel with a principal use. Properties with multiple businesses may share space on freestanding signs." So, I don't know if that meant to be plural or if you meant it on one, and I was thinking about a business like Brown Beagle, and I think there was some interest in putting something like that in this district. So, if you have a parcel and it's got 20 different businesses, you don't want 20 different 100-square-foot signs, but when I read this, that's what they could do.
So, I'll answer quickly, and Eleanor did show me that right before the meeting. What it indicates is you get one for each parcel, and then the explanation is if you've got multiple businesses, and Brown Beagle is a good example. I think this could easily be reworded in the second line of that Paragraph A, "Properties with multiple businesses may share space on the freestanding sign," singular.
Yep.
So, we're not saying you get multiple signs, but you can, on your one entitled freestanding sign, put multiple names.
That's what I thought.
And I think they intend to do it. So, again, second ayes are always the best, and in the first ordinance that you did, many of the errors occurred not in the original drafting of the ordinance, but when that ordinance leaves the City Council and goes to the attorney's office to be changed into the code book, there's an error, like the word setback versus set back. And then, when we publish it online now, there's a risk that the publishing companies create errors, and so, these are individual errors, and most of them are not done when they're originally written, they're done here. And yet, redoing this for you, I committed about three errors that I didn't get, and that's why we do this process, you catch that. It'll make it better. And you had asked on that first ordinance if I had anything to say. I don't know how many of you just look at your books or if you go online and look at things, but when I looked at the code book, I couldn't find anything, and I know this ordinance because I've been using it for 30 years, but we had big, bold capital letters for things like reserved for future use, and yet, what you're looking for is setback or whatever. And so, the whole purpose of this was to make it readable, but we found after the adoption of the Seelight District, there were errors made, and I'm not pointing fingers, but the final product was wrong, and it was not until we had the request, what was the business...
It was LCI Landscaping.
LCI Landscaping.
Yeah.
The new section of performance standards referenced that we would have... We could have no contractor yard light within a quarter mile of another, and that's not what was intended. It was the big contractor yards, like across the street, and that was an error that we didn't catch until they came in. As a planned unit development approval, we simply kind of brushed over it and then subsequently changed the ordinance. You've heard me from day one, when we talk about ordinances, the minute you adopt it, you find errors. You just don't get worried about it, but whenever you read something and you have a question, let us know because it's important to make those changes. And here, two completely different ordinances, we did housekeeping after... Well, in the sign ordinance, that's been around 15 years, and we've never made a change, so it's appropriate to do that, and I'm going to give you that same sales pitch when we talk cannabis later on the agenda.
Yeah.
Were there any other questions?
Does the Planning Commission feel comfortable making a motion to recommend the changes to the City Council, or do you want time for further discussion?
I think we're ready.
Okay. I'll look for a motion.
This is Barb. I'll make a motion to send the Ordinance 24-03, Chapter 7B, Sign Regulations/Housekeeping Amendment with changes recommended to the City Council for approval.
Is there a second?
This is Robin. I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made, and second, I will call for the vote.
Scott, aye.
Barb, aye.
Robin, aye.
Bethany?
Bethany, aye.
And Lynn, aye.
Bethany, aye.
Okay. That will be recommended to the City Council for approval next Wednesday, August 14, Presentation and discussion.
Do you just say 20?
It's 14.
14. Next week.
And Dean, I'm told this is where you shine.
Cannabis. Amongst others.
How did you know? I'm revisiting this 30 years after the fact. So, I'm up in Ely and have four... Three, no, my two grandkids and two other friends' kids, all under the age of five, and Jack calls and says, "How would you like to work on an overview for cannabis legislation?" And that was the best thing that happened all summer. I hope you had a chance, if not read this thoroughly, at least glanced through it. I want to tell you, while I accepted the invitation to help very gladly, the minute I went to all of the resources, it became clear that this was a lot more complicated than anybody anticipates, and we've got a deadline pending quickly. And the complication is that the '23 legislature had 100 and some odd pages of new legislation, and the '24 legislature had 117 or 77, I can't remember the number, amendments, and you can't go to a single source. They haven't rewritten the statutes, and so, you have to read the original law, and then you go look at an amendment. And I've done that in all of the provisions that affect us, and so, the actual definitions, which I have no intention of going through with you tonight, are updated according to the revised statute. A good starting point is to just understand what we're up against, and that's on my page four. I don't know what it is in yours.
23.
It's subsection Roman numeral two, called Basic Parameters. And the gist of this law is, first of all, governing everything. All of what we read is limited, like alcohol, to people 21 years old. So, it's no different from alcohol laws in terms of the required age, and that affects the retail sales getting picked up by the police or anything. The other is, we have a new state agency called the Office of Cannabis Management, or Office as it's referred to throughout the statute, that is essentially in charge of everything except industrial hemp, which industrial hemp is used for clothing and ropes and other things, but not part of the edible hemp products, and so, they're excluded from their jurisdiction. The biggest issue is in Section 3, and that is, and you know this, our interim ordinance ceases to exist on January 1 of the coming year, and so, to have something in place is your best protection. I don't think things are going to fall into place quite as quickly as we think, but applications can be accepted by the Office for any of these 11 businesses that are allowed by statute as soon as the rules have been adopted. Well, you didn't know this, and I didn't either, when I prepared this on July 23. The first draft of the rules were written on July 31, so just last week. They're out for review and comment. They're going to be reviewed by the businesses primarily, they're going to be reviewed by attorneys and other consultants that are going to assist in the licensing and registration process for these. I looked at the rules as they came out. There's really no miraculous insight, and certainly nothing for us. There's one out of 20-some sections that's labeled local, and it really doesn't say anything. As time goes on, it's critical because it'll be the rules that provide the clarification to any question resulting from legislation that's passed in these last two sessions. And so, I expect, and I think I said somewhere in here, this is a moving target, and it will be until we're ready to do something. But I think I'm going to try and sift through all of this and get us in a position where you start thinking about the real decisions that need to be made. Not worry about the final product, but there are some key policy decisions as we go on. Not worry about the final product, but there are some key policy decisions as we go on. In numbers three here, it simply says, "We do not have the ability to prohibit any of these 11 businesses." You have the right to pick the zoning district that they're going to be located in, but like sex businesses, we have to put them somewhere. You have a question?
Yes, I do, because when you say 11 businesses?
Yes.
Do you mean retail businesses in Columbus?
No. I mean the 11 categories which are on the following page, Roman numeral four. There are 11 businesses that require our local, if we get an application, our local licensing and ultimately permitting. And so, those include, I'll just read them quickly. Cultivator, manufacturer, retailer, which will be the most common, a microbusiness, which is the only one of these categories where onsite consumption, think an on and off sale, liquor. Nobody else has this, except potential events, and we'll talk about that. None of these others have the option for onsite consumption, but a microbusiness does. So, think of a microbrewery that's going to be able to drink onsite, and they can also sell it for home use. So, you've got microbusiness, mezzo business, and we can talk as much about the details as you want. Cannabis event organizer, this simply says, without limitation, that a licensed party can ask local units to hold an event for a maximum of four days. And so, this is like a group of manufacturers get together and say, "Hey, let's parade our top products, and we're going to hold it at X." I'm assuming these have to be held at other licensed facilities, à la a microbusiness, or a manufacturer, or a wholesaler, or possibly a retailer. But to have one of these, you've got to have a different sales room. And there is another product, and I don't know what was copied in your packet, it's called a model ordinance that was prepared by the state with assistance from the League of Minnesota Cities. And in it, it implies that we have the right, at the local level, to either allow or prohibit consumption at these events. So, a group of manufacturers want to get together, and they show their wares, and it's a pure policy decision whether you want to allow that. I don't read in the statutes, myself. And I asked our city attorney, I didn't get a clear answer. I was just pointed to the model ordinance, which says cities can decide this. I'm still finding the basis absent in the statute that says we have the authority to allow or disallow consumption at these events. Other businesses in the category of transporter, that's generally from a cultivator to other businesses, or from a manufacturer to retailers. There's also a delivery service, that would be a retail outlet, will deliver pot right to your home. You have medical facilities which already exist, testing facilities. If any of you were to look at the legislation from last year, it said there are 14 businesses. Well, I'm glad we're down to 11 that we have to deal with, but what they did was, in last year's legislation, they had medical retailer, medical manufacturer, and they just combined it in one. And any one of these categories, then, going through this registration, certification process with the state, is capable of, and if you read my page 10 of 12, as an example, under a testing facility, a person cooperative or business holding a cannabis testing facility may not own or operate or be employed in any other business. Some of these other businesses will say, a retailer could also be a manufacturer, could be whatever, whatever. So, there's an overwhelming amount of information, and I don't want to get bogged down by the details, but Sue's question is a good one, and just shout out at any time if I go too fast. I want to go back to Section 3 on my page four, and just make clear, in addition to these businesses, the new law allows any person 21 and older, at any time, on their person, that means their vehicle, to have two ounces of pot. Now, I don't know if anybody remembers back in the day, if you had a couple of grams of pot, you're in the slammer. I mean, this is bizarre. And these same people are allowed to have two pounds of pot, flour, pot, whatever, in their home, at any given time. Your cops can't do a thing about that. You can restrict these in public property, and that includes public places, lobbies of banks, apartment buildings, they might be able to keep it and smoke in their apartment, but they can't in the common lobbies, they can't on public sidewalks, and they can't in public parks. And that'll be part of your basic ordinance.
Similar to the guns, similar to gun postings. Is it controlled by?
And tobacco.
Yeah. It's controlled by that department?
Uh, no. Totally different.
It's against the law federally, that's part of the scary part about this.
Yeah.
It's state law, and at the federal level, they still say it's a felony.
Oh, my God.
So, you know, the states are all acting independently, Minnesota is now the 23rd or 24th state to allow legal cannabis. And again, I think the whole interest is maybe a different attitude towards how good or bad this stuff is, making that judgment, which, you know, back in the 60s, it was like, everybody was afraid, nobody knew anything, and if you got caught with stuff, you spent time in jail.
Yeah.
I had several high school friends who ended up in jail, because they were holding, you know, several ounces, not two pounds, for heaven's sakes, and they went to jail. So, we can't manipulate that. Anybody that's growing at their own home, and we can't stop that either, can only have four mature and four immature plants at one time. I don't know who's going to police that. I've got friends who were at my cabin after I had put this together, who are brewers, two brothers. And Montana is a state that's been legal with cannabis for a number of years. They told me, "Don't worry about outdoor cultivation." Nobody grows outdoors, because the good stuff can't be controlled. And it doesn't mean that individual homeowners might want to do what's allowed, but that's only for plants. So, they just said, anybody that's growing this for retail sale, and they want the best stuff, it's going to be like Burgen's, it's undercover, it's lighted, it's year-round. And so, I know Jack's original comment to me was, you know, there might be concern that we would have to allow cultivation in the rural residential district. And I'm sure somebody on 40 or 100 acres out there is sitting there going, "Why not?" But the laws require security, which means fencing and lighting, and you don't want that. And so, we're not going to do it. I just want to put that to rest right now. Anybody can cultivate, and if they wanted to cultivate outdoors, they could do it, if you like, in your commercial or industrial districts, but it's going to be indoors. And so, the other thing is, aside from having to pick the individual zoning districts, when the state makes a referral, so let's say your first retail license entity comes in, and they have vetted this business, they do the background checks, and they do everything else, and they send you a referral, this is for us to only consider that it fits or doesn't fit. In other words, it's in the right zoning district. So, the state may send us one, and it's in your light industrial district, and you're only going to allow retail in whatever district. You can turn it down, but if you don't act within 30 days, the state, by law, has the right to approve it. So, we want to make sure, even if you don't have an ordinance in place, that we're all on the same page, so that we can say, at the time we get these referrals, we're all in agreement, this is where it isn't going to be. Hopefully, we'll have an ordinance in place. I don't think the ordinance is that complicated. If any of you get copies, I know we have copies of this model ordinance, just don't look at the format. I mean, we would never create an ordinance standalone. This is going to be part of the city code, so we're going to amend several sections of the city code, definitions, the zoning districts, we're going to add a new performance standard section in 800 series, just like you had performance standards for this new Seelight District, it'll follow that section, and that'll have the guts of all the ins and outs, the decisions you make. So, your zoning district may say, "We're going to allow this, this, and this type of business, two, three, five of them, maybe all of them, that you're going to allow them," but it's going to have no other detail. But in Section 835, or whatever number we come up with in sequence, that's where it's going to say, on these special events, it's going to require an interim use permit, not, you know, because you're going to get these frequently, and I'm assuming you would go that route. I'm assuming the others, if you get a retailer, you're going to require a conditional use permit, not a permitted use. So, this first blush, you can only charge a business for the purpose of this local registration, 500 bucks. Why the renewal fee is 1,000 bucks? You got me. But that's, this is straight up, this is straight out of the statute. This is not to be confused, the very first referral you get, with your public hearing process, staff review, complete application, none of that. Then you charge regular fees, and you say, "Okay, they meet the requirements for this district, we can certify that they meet our requirements." Then you have to, they would have to submit a conditional use permit application, and it goes through the normal process, and you charge them whatever you want. But the law, in this case, said, "You can't charge more than 500 bucks." And again, once you got one of these in town, why would an annual renewal be twice that? I don't get it. That's the law. I think a lot's going to change. So, again, when they get here in the community, they're going to go through everything the way we treat any business. Do you want to go through, in any detail, these individual businesses, or do you want to jump to my to-do list?
Can I make one suggestion?
Sure.
Some of these would be really helpful if we knew more about what the business would require, so would it require a lot of water? Does it require sewer? Does it require, you know, I'm thinking, if it's a manufacturing business, are they using tons of solvents to get the chemical out of the leaves, and therefore, there's big fire risks? I mean, you know, when you get businesses that you kind of know, like, how they make their stuff, then you can kind of figure out where they might fit, like, you don't want a business that needs, you know, a lot of water on Lake Drive, because that's, might not be able to meet that. So, do we know anything about some of these, from that perspective?
Not specifically. The state is regulating all of the inputs, so, and I don't know what they are. What is added in the growing conditions? You know, the states come out, their policy is, "We're not going to allow nasty pesticides, herbicides, and that sort of stuff." This is not making pizza sauce, which is a tremendous user of water and sewer. There are provisions, and I made notation in a couple of these, including these events or microbusinesses that have onsite, they have to have special solid waste disposal, because they don't want, they don't want the gummies laying on the table, somebody went home, and somebody else could get access to them. So, they have to have special procedures. That's all going to be minor. The manufacturing is taking a plant, and it is essentially capturing the upper portion of the plant, not even all of the leaves, for the majority of what's happening. But they make, they compress, and they'll make concentrates, which are regulated separately, they have their own limits from other edibles, from the leaf, or the flower, or the pot itself. How specific, I don't know. I have not seen yet water and other use. But if you're going to limit them in the freeway corridor, any one of your districts is going to have the same problem, and our challenge is to require a district for each 11 of the businesses. If you don't want it in rural residential, and you don't want it on Lake Drive, which, I don't know, maybe one of these businesses could make sense on Lake Drive, but that's your decision. And then, they would have to meet the private demands for sewer and water services. I don't think it's extraordinary, but I'm not an engineer, I just know I worked in a community that made a lot of pizza, and they were 80% of their wastewater treatment plant for a city of 6,000. And it's a mess, because you've got to clean it all the time. Anyway, I'm going to make that notation, but keep in mind, if you limit these to the sewer and water district, they're going to have to live with our capabilities. Just like an apartment building comes in and says, "We need this much water pressure, if we can't produce it," they're not going to build it.
Right. So, and that's where I'm coming from, I'm just thinking back to like, my organic chemistry days, where we would extract caffeine from tea leaves, thinking, oh, it's probably more sophisticated than that, but basically, you soak it in a bunch of solvents, it takes the chemical out, you throw the solid stuff away, you evaporate the solvent, and then you've got the drug. So, if you're doing that on a big, huge scale, I don't know, I don't know what that industrial process requires, and so, that would be helpful to know.
Yeah.
In terms of where it belongs.
This is the time to come up with your wildest questions, because my head's congested with a lot of details and information, and trying to, again, make this more of a global view here in the beginning, and sift out, what is our challenge? And those details, we can send to somebody else. I mean, we can go to the Office of Cannabis Management and raise those questions. I sent him an email a week ago about this workshop, I think you, did they receive notice of a Friday workshop? If they want to go?
Oh.
At OCM?
I'll send it to him, that's on my link.
So, the Office of Cannabis Management, without explaining what it is, is holding a one-hour workshop this Friday at 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock. I signed up, I don't expect you're going to hear anything other than what you're getting here. You can't do an overview in an hour for this kind of information, but it is intended for municipalities, it's not geared towards the industry. If it was geared towards the industry, then somebody may say, "Are we going to know if all of these communities?" That's their problem, if they need high-demand water, and those people go out and seek that. We still have to find a district for them. And I think the restraints in our existing sewer and water system are identical in any one of the zoning districts, and so, we'll get an answer, but it shouldn't impact which district you might want to pick. Did that make sense?
So, I might have, this is Rob, I have something for Janet in regards to the process. So, dried cannabis flowers soaked in alcohol, then shaken gently, the triommes from the plant, the mixture is strained in a dish, and then the solvent is removed by using a vacuum and bringing up to temperatures of 181 degrees, which evaporates the solvent, leaving a THC-rich oil. So, that's a, that's that process. Another process I've heard of is, it's typically what people do at home, is they use butane and blow it through a tube to blow off the crystals to create oils. Those are the only two I know of.
And so, you know, I mean, so let's say, we say, "Oh, yeah, this, you know, manufacturing would fit on Lake Drive," but then it turns out that, you know, they need incredible fire suppression, because they got huge amounts of solvents, or they need, you know, something else that doesn't. So, that, you know, it just seems like, wouldn't it be helpful to know the requirements before? Because our two, our districts are very different, like, you know, if you've got utilities, or you don't have utilities, if certain ones of these requires utilities, then we know they can't be on Lake Drive, we don't even talk about that. But, anyway.
No, and I'll say this, again, the community I worked for had their own wastewater treatment plant, and it was expensive. And this was a huge business with a lot of employees, if I could think of the name, you'd, Bernadette Tellows. I mean, it was overwhelming what impact it had in the community, but it was very expensive. You're on the Metropolitan Waste System, and so, all of your problems with disposal are going to be going to be dealt with on a metro-wide basis. And I'm, I'm not trying to diffuse your comments and questions, but the regulation for the solvents, or any other effluent issues, are going to be regulated the same from one community to the other. Our biggest problem, if this was a high-water use, we may not be able to meet that demand immediately. Your city engineer might say, "If you want to have a water tower built, let them come in, they'll help." I don't have those answers today.
Well, you can add it to the list of questions to ask.
No.
Down the road.
I'm going to put them all down, and we'll get them in short order. Anybody else, before we move on?
Just a real, this is specific to retail, having to have a retail business in the city. It's my understanding that the code, or that the state law says that we have to have, allow at least one retail based on our population, and no more than that. But we also have an option to have a city-owned business. Would that allow us to control ownership of that retail business? Or is, is the city-owned business, like a municipal liquor store, in addition to that one retail store, under private ownership?
The clarification in the law is, you can get in the business, but you still got to allow one per 12.5. So if you're, if you're, if your choice was, "We only want one, and if we are the municipal, then we control everything." No. You still have to allow one per 12,000 population, 12,500 population. I worked in three different communities that had municipal liquor stores. I'm telling you, this is one can of worms, and if you've had no experience in it, you do not want to go down that street. Others have learned to be successful, but the first city planning job I had was down in the city of Rosemount, and they controlled the market, and they thought they were hot stuff. And then, when liquor liability got tough, they were paying $400,000 a year in insurance to keep that business. Do you think they made that much money? Not when you had Apple Valley, Eagan, and all of their neighbors having warehouse liquor stores, and they're selling out of a, their entire place was no bigger than this room. You don't want to go there.
I think we decided that, when we discussed this previously, that city doesn't want any part of the...
And, and you can come back, but to Scott's question, it doesn't mean that you still don't allow that one.
Right.
But you know, well, I thought, I thought I heard from Megan or somebody that, like, Vanoka County met their over many per 12,000, and they weren't here, like, they were in Fridley, and they were in Spring Lake Park, and they were wherever else, then we might not have to do that. So I don't know, I don't know where they're looking at the 12,500, if it's countywide, or, you know, if you have a city that, if every city is its own entity, so if you're less than 12,500, you have to allow one. There was some talk about, you might not have to worry about it, because if Vanoka County is friendly towards this idea, and the retail's all, you know, Columbia Heights and those places, you might not need to worry about it, because you'll, they'll meet their quota that way. So how does it work between city and county?
First of all, any, any city or town can convey authority to a county, as long as the county will do it. I don't, I don't see in the law the clarity that says...
Of course not.
If there's 240,000 people in the county, and divide that by 12.5, and in the midst of these other cities, you've exceeded one per 25, then Community X doesn't have to have any. I don't see that anywhere. What I'm seeing is, you got to have one, you can be a municipal, but you're still capable of having two, if a private entity wants to come in. And so I think we proceed at this time on the basis that your policy decision becomes, "Why restrict it?" Well, right now, you don't have a liquor store, okay? I don't think you're going to be in the early blush of this retail market. In fact, I don't, I don't see what's drawing this community. It's like a restaurant. I know how badly you want a restaurant. What do you need? Riff tops. How do you sell liquor, pot? Riff tops. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it. But here's a question, and I'll, I'll just say it for the record, since it's a workshop. If you had a favored business in the community that had an interest in this, and you felt inclined to nudge that towards that, this, your one, to that business, the legislature's also unclear on how you do it. It's first come, first served, it's a lottery, or other. I don't know what other means, nor do, nor do our attorneys. I, I had a couple of questions for them, and didn't get them answered, and time is going to give us those answers. But you simply need to say, "Is there a reason why we would restrict?" I'm up in Ely all summer, I can tell you, up there, they're viewing this as economic development. They don't want to limit theirs to one per 12.5. This is a community of 2,500 in the, in the winter, 35,000 in the summer, but 2,500 in the winter, and if they had five applications, they'd approve every one of them. No, they got five liquor stores, packaged liquor, they got at least six, seven, yeah, bars in the community, and so it's what your, it's what your policy is, what your philosophy about this is. Why would you restrict it? Is it your image of the nature of the business, that it's hideous, it's worse than alcohol, and we don't want anything to do with it? Well, then you focus on one. If it is for any other reason, that's, it's up to you. It's not up to me. If you said, "We want 10 of them," that's how we'd structure the ordinance, that it's open to anybody.
Yeah, and that was my clarification question, because I remember when Megan was here, and she, we talked about the one, that we have to allow one, but we could allow more if we wanted, and we can, right?
You can.
We can.
You have no restriction.
We don't have to, but we can.
You don't have to, and, and, and so, all of the communities like yourself that are right at 5,000 population, you know, you got one. If you're on Lionel Lakes, you're going to have probably two. I don't think they're over 25,000, maybe they are. In any event, the bigger cities are going to have to accommodate this. And then, in the same manner in which you have the ability to put a limit on liquor stores, you could put it on these others. It's, it's when it starts, when you're starting this system, how you would ultimately give those restricted licenses out. It's like solid waste business. It's, it's a hot business, and those communities that are open, you might have 12 operating, if, if, if business is good. Cities like Minneapolis have a consortium, and they say, "We're going to split this up amongst 26 different companies." It's complicated. For you, if you say, "We only want one," then my question is, how are you going to give it out? First come, first served? If you had three applications that all came in the same day, you could do a lottery. But if you had one, and the request is within 30 days, you have to say, you're giving it to them, because you've got to say they met your requirements. So another unanswered question, if you didn't do lottery, and you didn't do first come, first served, and let's say you have a favored business in town that wants the one you're going to give away. They either got to be here in the door day one, and if there's more than one, you have to come up with a system on how you're going to give that one up. The alternative is, if you had a favored business that already says, "I really want to do this," why not have multiple? Why not have four of them? You're not going to get four retail stores. It ain't going to happen. And so in your process, you start thinking about, really, what your decision is based on. What, what's driving your decision to have one, or more than one? And the other challenge, well, let's just go to the end of my...
I've got a question, Dean.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I know you're not an attorney, and you don't want to answer this, but does, do they have to open it? If somebody came in and, and got that one?
Yeah.
Do they ever have to open that store?
Because this is annual licensing, if they never opened it, the state's not going to relicense them. So you might have a waiting period. If, if you thought somebody was going to come in and, and hog your one retail license, but never did anything, and that would keep everybody out?
Yeah.
That license, in my estimation, and we don't have final rules by the office, if, if they haven't exercised that in that one-year period, they're not going to reissue that license, and it'll be open to somebody else.
A second question, 1,250 people, or whatever, that's just geographic to the city itself.
That's your community population.
Doesn't mean like, what city's sitting next to you that might have 50,000. It's just you.
Nope. And I don't see a provision where two communities can get together and agree to do something, but the legislation makes clear that a city or a township could convey, just like land use, the authority to the county. And, again, I don't see in the existing language, and I don't see the clarification in any rules yet, what would allow you to avoid any retail, because the county had issued more than one per 12.5. I don't see that.
Do, do, I'm losing my train of thought here. Shoot.
All right, it'll come back.
It will come back. Well, keep talking, I'll think of it.
Well, can I follow up on a, on a, something you mentioned too, Dean? You mentioned, maybe we have a local favorite businessman here that, that we want to have open this retail. How does that permitting process, because of the state, he has to make application to the state for that permit to run that retail business? I know there's a, a social equity qualifications, you know, with this as well, so preferential treatment for that permit may not go to our local businessman. It may go to somebody from a different location, having different backgrounds and circumstances.
I, I don't, I don't know that any of the equity advantages have anything to do with individual licensing here. The advantage was that they could begin applying for those now.
Okay.
Everybody else is waiting until after January 1. And that's where, again, in a hot market, Community X is already gone on record saying, "We're going to have three licenses," and there's 20 people lined up. You got to have a process in place, how you pick them. And if you had a favorite business, it better be a legal way of picking them.
And so if you have a lottery, and somebody that has social equity is already...
They don't get an advantage in a lottery, but neither does your favorite local...
But first come, first served, they might, because they can apply...
You could say it's first come, first served, and that's why I said earlier, if you've got a local business that's really hot to trot, it, it's incumbent on them to have their ducks in a row, they get processed by the state, and they're the first one that comes to us, and we say, "First come, first served." We've hit our limit, we're done. And you never worry about another retail business in the community. On, on the other hand, you, you each have to say, "What's the matter with competition? Why wouldn't we want more than one? What, what's the matter with that?" That's not my opinion, I'm just saying, that's part of your process. You have the ability to allow as many as you want. And if you felt that that was good, that, that's a policy decision that you make, not anybody else. At the same time, we haven't gotten any retail in this community since I've been here, to speak of, and, and so we got to be practical about it. You're, you're not the community where the doors are going to get beaten down. So from a practical standpoint, if you had a local entity that really wanted this, and you want to figure out how to protect that right, it might be saying, "We're not going to put a limit on them," because if they're not the first one in, and they don't win the lottery, they're not going to get our one permit. But if you had four of them, then the local business, plus anybody else who, quote, "would be silly enough to make an investment in a market," which, again, this is not a fishing or tackle store on an 80,000 trip-a-day highway where people are going to the cabin. When you're coming home, you're getting gas, you're getting something to eat, you're not stopping and getting edibles. This is a local...
Are you sure about that?
You might be heading north, though. You might be on the way north.
I was going to say, that's a perfect spot.
Regarding these cultivators and manufacturers, I can imagine that somebody would want to come here. I really, I mean, we've had really undesirable businesses wanting to come here, and I can't imagine that people wouldn't come here and build a, what is essentially a pole barn.
Well, they have to meet your design. They have to meet everything you have, we just have to find a district for each one of these businesses.
Right. So that should be a real concern for us.
Why? Which, which part?
Well...
You don't have to allow, I don't believe, and, and again, this is subject to the state and, and attorneys that'll sue each other. I don't think you have to allow any outdoor cultivation, but when you look at these acreages, two acres, what difference would that make if they were next to...
Well, you're talking indoor, and that's 30,000 square feet. We don't have a lot of property for sale, so you'd hate to have what we do have used up for something like this.
Well...
Why, it's a good business, makes a lot of money, takes in a lot of taxes. Takes in a lot of taxes.
No, not for us, it doesn't. For us, it's built, it's based on...
Square foot.
Your building. So if there's no building...
But there would be.
But there would be.
So, yeah.
Only if you fired them to build a real building, and not a hoop building, or something like that.
So you, you say, "We have commercial standards for all businesses," and somebody says, "Well, you essentially got a large greenhouse at Burgess." Burgess is treated as agriculture.
But this doesn't meet that, what we were told.
And they don't, the state is clear that all of these businesses are going to pay commercial real estate taxes. By the way, cities are getting cheated again by the state in terms of how much you get from sales tax, but that's beside the point. You can sit here and say, "You're not going to allow any outdoor cultivation." The building value, whether it is a lumberyard or a cannabis business, is going to be treated the same by the county. And so...
For taxes.
For taxes. Again, from my perspective, nobody's going to outdoor cultivate, simply because it can't be controlled. What the state rules, and I rolled my eyes when I read them over the weekend. Talk about hoop buildings and other stuff that, we're not going to allow that. It's going to be a commercial building. You can have glass skylights in there, but no hoop buildings, all right? That's going to be part of what the ultimate standards are for this business, so that you maximize your taxes.
Thank you. So on this point, on the kind of the look of these buildings, right, there's already, there's already several that have been built in Minnesota. Red Lake's built one. There's one under construction in Onamia. The, the tribes obviously got the head start on it, and they're working with an actual developer that comes out of Colorado. It's a, a developer with good money, right? So they've established both theirs, so as soon as they're done in Onamia, they're going to build the one in Hankley, right? This now is putting another unsaid casino at a disadvantage, you know, they might be out sports betting, now they might be out this as well. We're talking about one, one thing, but back to the design of the building. Like, like to Dean's point, it's all indoors. It's a beautiful tip-up building, it's got nice accents on the outside, you wouldn't even know what was going on inside there. It's a manufacturing facility with individual different rooms for different strains, and they're using what's, to your water point, it's a hydroponic-type thing, where they're recycling the water to water it, and they're recycling that water to keep watering it. They're not pumping more water out of the ground, they're reusing. So these people out of Colorado, or wherever they're coming from, they got a pretty good handle on it, right? And actually, I, I came straight from Eau Claire here, so I didn't get to grab it, but I'd be willing to share with you, we've been, I'm at work, we've been working on, you know, trying to capture that work through the facilities, because there's going to be conveyors and things of that nature. So we're, we're on the front side, working with the developers that might be trying to come here, you know, in hopes to get that work, right? But I've, I've got a packet about this big, about rules and regulations from other areas, and things that the state's going to allow here as well, so if you want me to bring that forward for the next meeting.
So how do you get them to, to build tip-up buildings, instead of just a metal...
Yeah, I think it would be through our design standard, right? Yeah, I think it would be through our design standard, right? In each area, we have a certain design standard, so they'd have to follow that, I think, as they get down along, you know, the, where Bergens might be, right? They might be allowed to just build a pole barn like we've accepted, but then again, there's a lot of, you know, areas there around Waldox, Central, they had talked about building tip-up buildings there, maybe that's, maybe that's what it is, a bunch of indoor tip-up buildings.
Well, that's what we'd like to see here, I mean, we're a small city, we have to start looking at what kind of businesses we're allowing in here and what kind of buildings they're making. You know, I mean, Love's to me is a disappointment. We were going to have big trees there to shield it, and you drive by it, it looks junky. They've got dead trees, they've taken out 16 parking spaces, there's no fire lane.
Yeah, you can kind of equate it to the day they put Walmart in and tore all them birch and poplar trees down, right?
Yeah, I mean, we were made, you know, promised certain things, and we didn't, we don't get them.
So may I say this, whatever design standards are in whatever zoning district are going to apply to any business, including cannabis, period.
They don't do it. They don't, they don't, they say they will do it, go look at Love's, it's an eyesore. It isn't a nice...
You're talking about the building design or the property?
The whole property.
Yeah.
Full of trailers every day.
I remember the site plan that had 116 trailers, so...
Oh, but we're not going to, they're not going to store them there. Well, it was brought up that the city, Minneapolis and St. Paul, weren't allowing trucks to park. It should have been obvious to everybody that they're leasing space.
And you're making a commentary which I, I'm not going to argue, but it has nothing to do with what kind of a building, I heard you say, I want a tip-up building, if that's in your design standards, that's what you're going to get. If it isn't, you have to amend those design standards, and to your other point, and I'm not, I'm not taking you on, I'm just commenting, we cut in half our landscape requirements 12, 15 years ago, that was a decision by the Planning Commission and the Council at that time. Restore it to where it was and you'll have more trees than Love's put in, but Love's did everything by the book. And the fact that they say they don't allow the trailers there more than 48 hours or whatever it is, that's the turnover. And Minneapolis can say what they want, truck drivers don't want to go in Minneapolis, for heaven's sakes, they hate going through on the freeway, let alone getting off on a ramp down there and find a business. So let's stick to the facts, and the design standards, if they're not adequate for cannabis, change them, and they'll apply to everyone, but we don't guarantee tip-up buildings. And based upon the height requirements to grow pot or manufacture cannabis products, they're not going to get up to the height of a tip-up, typical tip-up building in my mind. They might put one up, but all I'm saying is you don't have height requirements, because the plants are 12, 14 feet tall, and they, they're selling them when they're half that height, because that's the potency. And as Rob says, much of it has become hydroponic, it's fast, it's year-round, it's cycled, they don't need big buildings, but we can't guarantee they put a tip up, because our ordinance doesn't say that.
I remember what my question was going to be, so if the state doesn't finalize their rules by January 1, can we delay our process? I mean, and it's very likely they won't.
I, I, I don't think we should, I don't think we should guess that they are, aren't going to be done by then. My sense is, if they don't have final rules in place, they're not going to issue licenses, other than to the social equity partners.
I have less confidence in that than you do.
Well, I want to, I want us to be ready and answer these questions, and again, if you look on the last page of my document, there's only a handful of things that you really need to think about and not get bogged down by details. It is what...
Let's go through the questions.
Pardon?
Let's go through the questions.
Okay.
Say, Dean, also, real quick, if, if you go onto the Office of Cannabis Management, they have a guide for local governments and adult-use can, cannabis on there, they have a table in there that does a pretty good job at a high level of describing the different businesses and what the cities, the activity of that business, and recommendations for zonings for cities. That might be worth us looking, getting that and drawing that off that website. The other thing that's in that is that model ordinance that you mentioned, that's in that packet as well, so that would be a good resource in addition to everything you're giving us.
Yeah, and, and so you should have copies of all of that, you're welcome to get 112 pages of the draft rules, I don't think they're worth it at this stage, I think, and I know the city got copies of everything you just described, I've reviewed everything, and then I went through on a more detailed basis and reviewed each of the statutes for each business, for our responsibilities at the local level, and that's where I still have remaining questions, why a model ordinance would say, we get to decide whether those events are onsite consumption or not. I don't see that anywhere in the statute. So that, that'll evolve, but you should answer that question so that you're ready when we know the answer. How many licenses do you want to issue? If you're worried that between lottery and first come, first served, you might not serve somebody that's got a real interest, just start out and say, we'll allow three of them. You're not going to get three of them.
So you don't think that there's going to be naive people who think this is going to be their, their golden pathway to riches, and they're going to go through this process only to find out that it's not? I mean, that's, that's, and that's what I'm thinking about with the cultivation, too. I mean, I totally believe what you say, that is true, but that doesn't make me any less, I would not be surprised if there's people that are lining up, I'm less worried about the number of retailers that, for the same reasons you are, more about, like, I got 10 acres, I could take five of that acres and I could grow pot, and they don't know that, all the things that you just said, and they're going to be, you know, running down here with their pen in hand and wanting to get a permit for that.
And you can, you can go back and look at cultivator, that's my page five out of this list, outdoor cultivation, maximum two acres, okay? And the office can double that, and they say that throughout. Indoor cultivation is much smaller area, 30,000 feet.
No, but people can plow up two acres for not very much money, get their seed implanted and...
I would agree, and I, I think the position that we take is that because we don't have an agriculture district, we're not going to allow any outdoor cultivation, and we carry that a step further, and in a commercial industrial district, outdoor doesn't make sense, it's got to be indoor.
So can we just, like, have a vote on that or a weigh-in on that, and then we can be done with that topic and move on to the next one? Because I agree with you, but I'd like to hear if everybody else did.
All right, so number one, let's just say...
Can I, can I make a comment?
We got a comment over here.
I, I can pretty well assure you that the chances of people trying to grow marijuana outside is very, very, very slim, because the purity that is expected out of plants, you cannot get that with outdoor cultivation.
I, I hear what you're saying, I'm just saying that I think this early in the game, there's going to be people that don't know that, and they're just going to get excited, they've got land, they're going to plow it up, it's not going to cost them very much money, and they're going to try it.
Oh, and there's also, it's a huge dollar output, it is not cheap to start up in this business because of all the regulations that are already there.
Well, that'll be good if that's true.
So, to Janet's point, is there anybody opposed if direction number one on my list says, nobody wants outdoor cultivation anywhere? Is that fair?
Agreed.
I agree.
Now, that's accepting anybody's personal right to grow it on their property.
Right.
Okay, no outdoor cultivation anywhere.
What's personal?
What?
Four, four plants. Two mature and two baby plants, yeah.
You can have four mature and four immature plants at any one time, and they're going to be in somebody's basement or screen porch or whatever.
Next, they're tomatoes.
You, you need light on these plants 24/7.
I understand that, not that I've grown them before, but I know people that have, and the reason they don't...
Yeah.
It's because they pollinate, and when they pollinate, a male plant won't give you the THC, and the THC is only in the female plant, so that's why when you get them outside and they start pollinating, and they all go to hell, and they turn to males. I mean, this is a source that told me that.
So he knows more than we thought.
He wasn't police officer.
It sounds like a dare instructor.
It isn't that they become male, what isn't that they become male, it's that they become seed plants, and the flower that's the, what they want to harvest, the flower turns into nothing but seeds, and therefore it's totally useless.
You're a man, Mike.
Yeah, so it's less about purity and just...
So you can solve it all, Dean.
Do you, you read Rolling Stone?
We can solve all the, all the discussion by saying no outdoor cultivation.
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to frame it in those words, but I'm, from my direction, nobody wants outdoor anywhere. I don't think it's going to happen anywhere, but we're, for sure, we're going to allow indoor cultivation in X districts. Let's cut the community in half right now, we've got Sea Light and CI District on Lake Drive, and we've got the freeway corridor. Is there any one of these businesses that anybody would want to consider? And certainly retail, again, isn't going to happen, but is there a reason for you to make consideration for Lake Drive for any of these businesses, or are you focusing on the freeway? And again, it's up to you.
So, a testing facility, I could see that fitting in on Lake Drive. I mean, all they're doing is testing for the potency, so it's going to be like a lab, like any kind of lab, and I think we actually have that in some of the standards.
Well, and the cultivator, too, I mean, like we already talked about, the cultivator would be just growing in 30,000 square foot building. It could be a tip-up and meet all the standards, I mean, like Rob, you mentioned, on Lake Drive, Waldox Properties got six lots.
Right.
I mean, that'd be a perfect...
It would be perfect.
It's non-invasive, they're not, you know, they're just, they stay inside, they don't have a bunch of trucks. I, I mean, I could see that really anywhere in the business district.
I agree with you, yeah.
So I've got testing and cultivation.
Well, transportation and delivery are two other, that, that's a lake...
Wherever you got cultivation, probably these transporters are not going to be associated with every facility, it's, it's going to be too expensive. So I think a, a commercial transporter is going to have fingers out to manufacturers, to these mezzo businesses, to cultivators, it's going to be one, but you might, a transporter, they can't have cannabis written anywhere on these trucks, delivery or other. I don't think you'll get a delivery business, but if you wanted to show good faith that you're considering all your zoning districts, transporter and delivery are probably safe businesses to allow.
So, Gina, are those like box trucks, box trucks, semis, what's the transporter?
Yeah, so the transporter is capable of, it could be even a semi, I don't think they've put limits on tonnage for the vehicles.
Well, I asked the question, because I think we've consciously tried to limit more semis driving through our city, but box trucks or vans or what, I mean, something smaller isn't as big of a problem.
So if you look at the size of the cultivator, 30,000 square feet, which could be doubled, you're talking about an acre indoor growing, how many semi trucks are going to come in there? I think it's going to be box trucks, but they don't specify and limit, and even if it was, these aren't going to be daily, they're going to...
Three times a year or twice a year.
It's going to be pretty spread out.
Okay.
Shouldn't you also include manufacturing? Couldn't it be cultivated? That would have been...
I would like to know more about how that's done, just...
What about, yeah?
And solvents and all that, I mean, just, I just feel like, you know, that would make sense to know more about how it's done, to decide where it would fit.
Talking about the zoning now, it possibly may fit.
But if it's hydroponic, it's just...
Well, that's a cultivator, that's not the manufacturer.
Yeah, manufacturer wastes water and water is important, the other thing that nobody's talked about is odor, a lot of the stuff is going to create a pretty distinctive odor.
To your point, Scott, I think, I think possibly in here and some of the state guidelines, there's something about odor in there and them having to either recapture that if it's an indoor facility or something of that nature.
Could, yeah.
I, I remember hearing about it or looking into it last time we talked about this, but don't fully quote me, I'll look into it.
There he is.
Yeah, but, but the, the Office of Cannabis Management does suggest that jurisdictions consider odor as a byproduct, too, when they're, they're considering where to locate the businesses.
And can we, can we agree that we don't want any of this in the rural residential district?
Oh, you won't have anything, I don't, I don't see any...
So that's just a given?
There won't be any, so...
Okay.
That's why I split it up, you've got freeway uses and you've got Lake Drive, and so far, I've got testing, cultivation, transportation, delivery, you might consider manufacturer or mezzo business, which is a combination of, they're allowed to cultivate, they can manufacture certain things, and, and that could be under one roof. If your questions about sewer water, excessive solvents, odor, they're all going to meet requirements, and again, you can, you can easily say, well, I'm not convinced the state does a good job in whatever, but there are going to be limits that apply to these businesses. So I'm going to put way out on the margin, manufacturer and mezzo, I'm not going to put micro because that is, that's an onsite usage, it's the retail district, okay? You could put medical.
Yeah, I think medical's fine.
I mean, it's going to fall in the same category, but medical is allowed to cultivate and do a number of these things as well.
Where's the medical definition?
Page 10, okay.
Well, there it is, thank you.
So right now, I think there's four medical facilities in the state of Minnesota, so that's all prescription-based, and when the floodgates are open, I'm assuming there's not going to be a need for more medical, I don't know, but they have extraordinary testing procedures, which I don't know if are going to get relaxed because of new manufacturers essentially doing the same thing for non-prescription use. I, I, nobody knows, and so the, the medical has the ability to apply for a retail outlet, and if that were the case, then I would say like the micro business, we don't want to, we don't want to encourage that onsite or consumption basis in, in Lake Drive, it's, we don't have utilities, it's not, it's not going to happen anyway. They're allowed in the medical facilities a 60-foot thousand canopy, which again, might be doubled by the, by the state. I just, I, I'm skeptical that you get any of them, but I'm going to put medical in there, and I have a question mark on manufacturing and the mezzo business, and so we've got testing facility, transporter, I'm not going to, not going to, well, we can put delivery, but that isn't going to happen either in my mind, and then that gets us back down to the mezzo, the micro, the retail, and manufacturer and cultivator. So out in the margin, I've got question about manufacturer or mezzo business in Lake Drive, depending on what kind of conclusions we're able to reach ultimately on, on waste issues. Okay.
Are we worried about wholesalers? Wholesale?
Yeah, I glossed over wholesale.
And the event...
I just can't imagine a wholesaler being successful in this.
I can't either, but if you want to pick a district where, you know, you're accommodating it, and you say, is a wholesale... it, and you say, is a wholesaler the best use out on freeway, or is it better on Lake Drive? The, the more of these uses that you just don't think are gonna happen, period, uh, we show good faith that we've got them located in certain districts, and, and that the business isn't gonna go there because of whatever factors. But that's our decision-making. I'm not saying we're trying to sabotage.
Right.
But we need to locate all of these in at least one area, one district. And they can all be in one. You could put all these in the light industry and the freeway corridor. But if you want a retailer, and you want one to work, then you're talking about, in my estimation, community commercial, highway commercial, uh, mixed-use district, wherever you'd see other retail.
Well, I don't think we'd want mixed use if there's gonna be residential as part of that.
I'm sorry?
I said, I don't know that we'd want them in mixed use if, mixed use is gonna also contain residential.
So...
Whether it's apartments, or whatever.
Let's, let, and the best way for me to answer that is to give you an example. So we approved an apartment project, I guess it's dead, uh, maybe it can resurrect, and that was just north of Caribou. The whole other side of the street, it was envisioned, and whether it ever happens, uh, like a retail strip or some other. I need to know, because it'll help me in formulating everything. Why wouldn't you want, whether it's a liquor store or a retail, just because it's close to housing? That's where the people who live in those places want it.
Am I just...
Across the street.
Walking distance.
So I, we talked a little bit about this with, I think it was with Bill, and we were talking about it in the context of gas station, convenience store, and he goes, if you put that in across the street from your apartment complex, you won't get an apartment developer.
If you put it... What?
So there was some interest about a convenience store, gas station, not as big as Love's, but more like, probably like QuickTrip, or a little bit bigger, for that area that's right across from where the apartment complex. And he's like, you could do it, but if you do that, you're not gonna get a, you will not get an apartment in that spot. They will not build across the street from that. So that's where I was coming from. If he's right, he works with a lot of developers, more than, more, more insight than I have. So I still think that's a great place for an apartment, so I wouldn't wanna put anything across that would discourage a developer from building it, because they don't like what's across the street. That's all.
Yeah, I, but I, I wanna focus on where you think retail works, and to me, it is in a mixed-use district. That's where all the micro breweries are. They're, they're not away from housing, they're right there. They want that, they want the people.
But the, it's not, I mean, this micro business isn't just like a micro brewery. There's a whole bunch of other stuff they can do.
Yeah, right.
So that's the part that makes it really confusing to me, is like, so if you say you're gonna allow a micro business there, what if they wanna do cultivation? What if they wanna do, you know, I, I mean...
It's gonna be indoor, and it's gonna be small cultivation, because there are square-footage limits. Maybe they'd buy that whole piece of property from you instead of another truck stop, if you had a micro business, and whatever. So try not and put it in the perspective of who you think might build, and what it's gonna prevent. And did you say Bill said this?
Am I not remembering that correctly? Didn't Bill say that?
Yep.
Yep.
Bill, Bill works with more developers than he does with cities, and so you gotta, you gotta make sure you get which side of Bill you're getting on.
And actually, that's what he said. I work with a lot of developers, so I'm telling you, an apartment developer is not gonna build across the street from something like that.
But he was not referring to a cannabis business?
No, 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 no.
He was referring to the truck stop.
Uh, it wasn't a truck stop, it was a...
Well, another gas.
Yep, yep.
So, gas is off the table, cannabis is on the table.
Yeah, but I, I was, I was sort of equating it in terms of desirability in the same bucket. You know, I think, for me, what's hard about this is there's so many unknowns. And so I really, like, my gut feeling is to go very conservative until a lot of these things get sorted out. You can always add them back in, right? Like, say, well, let's, you know, put these things in our, in our prime real estate. And I like the idea about the Waldox, I think that's a great, I mean, I'm not opposed to that, but my, my, my hesitation is that so much is not defined on this. And especially if you're talking about CUPs, which I think we shouldn't, because I don't want it to go with the land forever and ever, when it's this early stage of the game. That's my, that's my concern. I feel like maybe being very conservative about what you want and where you want it, until a lot of these things get sorted out, makes sense. You know, the flip side of that is you might be missing some opportunities. So I, I mean, but I just, I'm very uncomfortable with how ill-defined all of this is.
I'm looking at it purely as a land use perspective, and, uh, I don't think that the retail or the micro business is in conflict with residential. I do think that both of those uses are in conflict, being three miles, uh, down the road in a light industry district. It's where would you allow, uh, a restaurant, another entertainment use? You, you want it next to other retail opportunities. And so, without having all of these answers in place, if you understand that retail has no onsite consumption, the micro business does, where would you place those? Where would you put a, where would you put a tavern? You wouldn't put it next to the apartment? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
But, but see, again, what, what, no, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
But there's a lot more known about taverns. You know there are dram shop rules, you know what, how much people can consume before they're impaired. There's rule, I mean, there's just a lot more experience with that, so you have a little better sense of how it's all gonna play out. With this, it's the wild, wild west.
Yeah, and, again, I think the comparison to a tavern is, is a realistic one. We're, we're talking about very comparable products that alter your mood. I wouldn't wanna be a cop today, Ron, because I don't know how you can tell if somebody's too high on cannabis, but you can tell on alcohol. And so that's a new element, but that's not what we're dealing with here. We have to focus on land use, and we have to tell the state that we have an ordinance that accommodates every one of these 11 businesses, and we're gonna allow 1, 2, 12 unlimited number of retail. That's our challenge. And the fact that some of these things aren't there, and some of the questions about whether we have sufficient water capacity, I still say we can, we can go through each one of these uses and say what district they belong in. That's where I wanna start, and then come back and answer questions where you can pull them out or move them from one district to the other.
Um, one other question I have is, I, you know, I remember discussions about how, you know, the problems that it creates when the state laws are in conflict with the federal laws, and how any sort of banking or anything like that is not gonna get involved with these businesses at this, at this stage of the game, so it's mostly a cash business, especially with retail, it's a cash business. And then that creates potential problems for crime, because everything is in cash. Is that true?
First of all, I, I, I don't want us going down the path of trying to determine whether we ought to be doing this, because the feds don't sanction it, and it's, it's invoking a criminal.
No, 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 I'm not going there. I'm just saying, if, if, that, if that conflict in the rules requires that these businesses, these retail businesses in particular have to deal in cash...
Why would they do that? I mean...
Because, because they can't get bank loans, they can't get, they can't deposit, they can't, because it's all in conflict with the federal rules. Same thing is with, you know, if you've got grants, you can't say that you're abiding by all the federal rules if you've got these, because you're actually in conflict with, they might not enforce it, but you can't attest that you are complying with federal rules. So I, I don't know if this is true, I just have heard that that's one of the other complications with this, and that some of the businesses, especially when they're in disadvantaged areas where there's already high crime, and now you're, you're putting in a business that's only dealing in cash, that seems like kind of bad planning.
I don't know if that's true. You can order pot online, put your credit card, they'll send you anything you want.
And not only that, they...
So, I've heard that, Janet, too. And I've heard...
And, and I don't know if it's true, that, I'm just asking if we know what the answer is on that.
They take credit cards and everything.
You can order anything you want online.
Even the, the ones that sell it legally.
And Dean, back to your point, we're not talking about...
Because it's medical. So medical has a federal exemption, the recreational doesn't.
I say we go through the rest of your questions, and then we come back and talk about it after we have more inform, you know, there's unknowns, and as more information comes out, I, I, you know what, it's gonna be on Amazon, you just watch. Somebody's gonna come up with a business called Pot Dash, you just watch. So there's things we can't control, but there's things we can. So if we go down your list and make an idea of where we, what we want, and where we wanna put it, that's our challenge right now.
Dash, dash.
Stash, dash.
Dash, dash.
Y'all think?
I mean, they already, DoorDash liquor, should we go through each?
You wanna put a zoning map on, on your screens? People can look at the zoning map.
Does Bethany have anything? Is there hand up or anything?
Put the freeway corridor up. And Janet, I think we just can't do anything about, some of the questions or concerns you have, and our challenge is to be ready when, when we get applications. And we may not see, I, I think, again, if you're in Blaine, I'd, I'd, I'd be, I'd be really concerned that we gotta be done, 'cause they've got a market. Minneapolis, St. Paul, Bloomington, everywhere. We're on, we're on the fringe, and, and the investment isn't gonna be made here. It's, it's in part why you don't have an apartment project. I mean, you know, several investors look at that, and they can't make the numbers work. Is somebody able to do a small retail business selling cannabis? Probably. It's not, it's not outrageous, but if you're starting from scratch, instead of occupying an existing building, that's a big investment.
Well, I think, I think you're right. I think that the, the businesses that are gonna be attracted here are gonna be the ones that need space, because that's in short supply in the, in the suburbs, and very expensive.
So where you got the most population in the Twin Cities, you've also got higher vacancies of commercial industrial space. We, we don't have population, and we don't have any existing buildings. Not, not that are attractive, ready-to-use retail spaces. And so this is a big investment for somebody, but again, I, I, I just say, we can't, we can't worry about fringe issues. We have to worry, what is, in our estimation, uh, the best district for each of these particular uses to go? And I've got outdoor cultivation nowhere, and now we're gonna start talking about cultivation. We said Lake Drive, either CI or CI Light. Where would cultivation go in the freeway corridor?
How about over? I was thinking about that, even that little business park that's down closer to, um, what's that big equipment business? Ziegler.
Oh, down by Ziegler?
Mm-hmm.
On the west side?
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna look at a, and, and that's in the light industry district.
It's right here, yeah.
You've also got remote space, uh, on the east side of Hornsby, and that's our general business district. There's also a couple of little parcels, uh, real close to where the, uh, freeway storage is, uh, that's on the west side. I, you know, on the surface, I look at this, and I just go, well, those, those are remote. Uh, if you're gonna allow cultivation, you don't have to have immediate access to the freeway, you're not wanting to put them in, in the retail districts. I'd say general business and light industry would be cultivation, and anywhere on Lake Drive. Now, that's not the end of cultivation. If you're selecting a medical business, which, again, I don't think you're gonna get, uh, they're gonna have a component of cultivation, and is there anything wrong with that? But if it's just a pure cultivator, it's gonna be a smaller building, 'cause they don't, they're, they don't allow that much growth, or growing space. If that's consensus, I'm gonna put that down, light industry and general business. Okay? We've gotten rid of cultivator, retail.
Light industry and what?
And general business.
Or Lake Drive.
Or Lake Drive, yeah.
Lake Drive.
Yeah, we kinda did the reverse. We said Lake Drive, and then we, we took all the businesses and put them in there. Now, if we go down the list of the businesses, uh, 'cause we, so retail, again, with, without getting on my high horse and trying to dictate what's good or bad about this whole business, where would you put a retail business?
Well, I think on Holiday site of West Freeway Drive. Horse racing district?
Yes. Horse racing district.
Well, that's not horse racing there, though, is it? I mean, in addition...
Well, let's just say you got...
I can't see the letters on there, sorry, Dean.
I can...
So Mayor, I, I think where you're talking is that property by Holiday, they've just bought a lot of that up, so that's, that's now, I think, zoned horse racing, or where we talk, it's not yet?
No.
We talked about maybe changing it with...
Or just talking to him about what he wants to do.
Well, I was thinking, coming right down that side there, that brick building that used to be the chiropractic thing.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the community commercial, from, from Holiday straight down. That's all community commercial.
That's all community commercial.
And that's where the new hospital, the veterinary hospital's gonna go.
So horse racing district plus community commercial.
For retail.
For a retail business.
You can run in by a...
You go just to the west of the property that they bought, uh, that's red, and on the north side, including some of the city property, that's, that's right at the corner of Walk and Don't Walk. Is there any reason why you wouldn't allow it in general commercial?
Well, are we talking one, or are we talking, like, as many as we want? Or as many as we can? 'Cause I'm, I'm more in favor of find one spot that you can fit one to meet the requirement, and see how this plays out.
Okay. Let's just say the others overrule you and say, we don't wanna put a limit on it. What districts would they go in? That's my question.
Well, let's ask the question if we want one or many. I mean, they can overrule me, I'm only one voice, and that's fine if they do. I just don't know that we've answered the question.
We can solve that right away.
I, I would say, in my opinion, I don't think we should limit it, but because, like what you said, we're not gonna get a rush of people, but we could get a few. And I wouldn't limit it to one. I don't think it's the wild, wild west anymore. There's 23 states that have legalized it, they've perfected it, we can get information from them. It's not like we are the first ones that are doing this. So I, I mean, I agree, even in that upper, where the red is, our property. I mean, let's say, for example, hypothetically, we put in a senior citizen center. That's the fastest-growing age group that's using cannabis. Why would you not put one right there? So anyway, I'm just saying that I don't, I, I don't wanna limit it to just one and pick the spot. I think we should leave it open.
So that's an interest, that brings up a question I have. Are there limits on where you can locate these compared to things like senior citizens buildings or...
Where you, you can, you can, the law says you can keep them so many feet from schools and things like that, but it doesn't make reference, it actually includes...
Parks.
Housing, rehab facilities, a separation, and from parks. We really don't have any of those impacting that separation, and we, we wouldn't have the authority to expand that. So if you felt you would not want one, and a senior location, then you'd say, well, we have a potential senior location where we've got high-density, uh, south of the racetrack. You also got high-density up on the northeast quadrant of the freeway. And would you restrict one where you wouldn't the other? We don't have that ability. We're gonna pick one district. You could rename that and change, uh, the mixed-use high-density to senior high-density. And then you say, we're not gonna allow retail in that. But when I listen to Sue, it's like, an awful lot of my friends are seniors, and they're all on medical pot, and they're waiting for the price to go down and get better stuff. I don't get it. I, I'm getting a new hip, and I've been very much in pain this last month, and I actually took one of my daughter's medical gummies. It did nothing for my pain. Nothing.
And that's unusual, because I have, I live with somebody with chronic pain, and it helps a lot. And it really depends on what you're using.
I, I think it is. I'm, I'm not ready to go get my pipe out again and, and go overboard, and it's not legal yet, but I wanna say, I didn't even feel, I didn't even feel goofy, and this was a 10-milligram gummy. I mean, it was the top of the line. feel goofy, and this was a 10-milligram gummy. I mean, it was the top of the line. Uh, it did nothing for my pain. But others swear by this stuff. And so we, we got some saying it oughta be next to the seniors.
[laughing]
Uh, where do you wanna put retail? Well, no, we were going on the basis of how many retail first.
Okay.
One reason not to stick with one. If you have a favorite business in town that would like to secure rights to this...
Do you know of, of a favorite business that wants to? 'Cause I don't.
I don't either.
Okay.
But I'm telling you, uh, we, we corrected the name of a business earlier tonight, which, if I were in their shoes, I'd be thinking, but I've had no direct conversation. I'm only highlighting the fact that if you wanna limit it to one, you have to pick either a lottery system, if you get multiple requests, or it's first come, first served. If that local business is not the first one out of the chute, you have no method that I'm seeing now, and I'm not your attorney, and they can give you an opinion later, how you can guarantee that they get it. But if you said you had five of them, I'll guarantee the salary for the rest of my tenure here in Columbus. You're not gonna get five retail businesses. So you would assure one of those went to somebody that really wants it. So the question is, what, what is your philosophy on the number?
Let's throw out three.
I was just gonna say three.
Three.
Get this thing moving. I just don't think a lot of people, like you say, if you're
a marketer or anybody in business, you're not gonna go to a place where you got competition. So...
You, you're, you're gonna see warehouse cannabis retail competing with little mon-pop package stores just like now. And, and again, with your population base, I don't see it happening, but in connection with your local business, that kind of falls right into the alley of the entertainment-type uses that they may want. And if you wanna guarantee that, and we don't know how to guarantee a license to them, because it's the order in which we get them, and we have 30 days to say it's good. So Joe Blow comes in before your local business, and they are certified by the state, we have to say it is or it isn't satisfactory in that district. Now, you could turn this around, and you might get in trouble. This is a legal opinion, and you're not gonna get an answer, because working with as many attorneys as I have, they all have different opinions, too. You could say that this only belongs in the HR district.
I don't, I, I wouldn't be comfortable saying that until you talk to the HR industry to see how they feel. 'Cause I mean, you might be right, that they would really love to do this, or they may want that nowhere near what they're doing, because it creates too much liability. I have no idea.
Yeah. My only question is, does their charter operating, uh, the racetrack prohibit them from things of this magnitude? And that's not for us to have to determine. But if there's an interest in that, and you wanted to preserve that interest, I think, first of all, multiple opportunities for retail makes the most sense, or you restrict it to a district. Now, you only got one business on one zoning district, so the first potential legal challenge you'd get is like spot zoning. Well, nobody else is even allowed to have HR except them. How fair is that? That, that's potential challenge. Are you gonna get challenged? Having three, and they wanna do it, they need to line up, and they need to be first, or second, or third. You're not gonna get three of them. You're just not. And so, again, aside from concerns about where exactly you want them, am I hearing a direction to have more than one potentially guarantee opportunity without relying on first come, first served, or lottery?
If we raise our hands, everybody raise your hand if they're in favor of more than one.
Three.
Yeah, I don't care.
Yeah, the number that's been thrown out was three, right, Rob?
Yep.
Yeah, it seems everybody's comfortable with three.
Except me. I won't go on the record. I am not, but that's okay.
Okay.
It's a democracy.
Okay. I'm gonna put, not anything other than consensus for up to three. And we're, we're gonna revisit all of this when you see it in a different format.
Do we wanna ask Bethany if she wants to weigh in on any of this?
Bethany, do you wanna weigh in on it?
You are muted.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, I muted it, 'cause there are really loud planes. Um, I'm, I mean, I'm kinda with the group consensus. I feel like three is a reasonable, feels reasonable. It's, I also, uh, I think I'm, I understand what Janet's saying regarding like the stigma, making it with, you know, making it like, somebody may not want it to be across from a development, because people, some people still think of it differently than alcohol, but I think that that's changing, and I feel like it's gonna change pretty quickly now that it's, you know, legal here. I don't know. That's all. I don't have, I don't have a ton to add that isn't being said already.
Okay, if, if temporary consensus is multiple, whatever that number is, where do they go?
Right.
I, I think if you have a potential local business, you wanna put the HR, and if you stay in the cluster of the interchange itself, I think you're adding community commercial, general commercial, and that takes you on all four sides of the interchange. Is there any reason to expand that and go down to the highway commercial? That's the brown one.
I think that, I, I think we should not limit it, because that is an area that, I mean, it is developing, and at some point, there could be a whole, whole row of businesses, and why not? And it might be less intrusive to what other people are thinking that it might affect.
Well, you had one redevelopment of the animal care facility on the east side, which is in that highway commercial district. There are some other businesses there that are potentially subject to redevelopment at some point. Those are your only other businesses, except for the one right next to Muddy Paws. You don't, you don't have any, you just don't have a lot of buildings that would potentially be used for this type of use, 'cause we're talking small space. It's, it's, it's not huge. So do I hear consensus on highway commercial, general commercial, community commercial, the high-density mixed-use, and the horse racing?
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, more than enough room.
Yes. And highway. All right, going down the list, let's just follow in order after the retail. Uh, whoops, that's on page six of my list. That's the microbusiness. So this also is retail-oriented, but the, the true onsite consumption. Is there any reason it wouldn't be the same districts as the ones we just named? That allows indoor cultivation, 5,000 square feet. That's a small part of a facility that potentially manufactures, cultivates, and allows...
So question on that. Within that, we talked about, some folks said, no, no outdoor cultivation. Number two, under the mic, we're talking on the microbusiness or the mezzo business? 'Cause under the microbusiness, it says that it allows up to a half acre, which, would we eliminate that in those districts?
I, you know, I think that's the direction that I'm hearing you wanna take, and we're not eliminating, eliminating one of any of 11 businesses that the state says we have to allow. We're, we're restricting the activity of a portion of one of those. Simply saying, we'll allow cultivation anywhere, but it's gotta all be indoor. And that's because we don't have an ag district, which, on the surface, you'd say is outdoors. Again, I think it's moot, 'cause nobody's gonna do outdoor. They wouldn't find a buyer. They just wouldn't find a buyer. It's not, it's not...
How about the consumption part of it? 'Cause we talked about that. We didn't know if we wanted to have a place that does consumption, because then you are gonna get people who are potentially being crazy. Isn't that what we talked about earlier? Is that we didn't wanna have the microbusiness because of the consumption piece?
I don't know. I, would you not put a tavern across the street from the only apartment building you had in town?
I, I would be okay with it, but I wasn't sure if that was different than...
I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you do anything other than, if you're allowing the retail, and now you have a retail with a, a, a consumption component, is that different from where else you would allow taverns and other things?
Right, no.
So I think it should be the same as the retail, all of those districts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna just say for now, and this is all for now. We gotta give all of us a chance to change our mind, or get on board.
You're not gonna convince me till it's, till it's better defined. I'm just, just that way, stick in the mud.
Yeah. No, no, no. Uh, okay, same as retail. The mezzo business is more on the level of growing and manufacturing. You know, they can, uh, they can be involved with other wholesalers. They could potentially be licensed to have events, as could a microbusiness, as could a retail store, if they meet the requirements for private entrances, private secured outdoor area or indoor area where the consumption takes place. Uh, the mezzo business is just, it, it, it adds a little more cultivation. It's, it's more of a manufacturer.
Bigger.
It's bigger. So that one, you say it doesn't have the retail component quite like a microbusiness or retail store. Does that suggest going back to light industry and general business, away from your other entertainment and retail?
Yeah, I think that's the idea.
So is that, that include the Lake, Lake Drive area for that?
Yeah, he already said Lake Drive.
Okay. Yep, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Barb.
Can't wait to get one across the street.
Walking dis... You're gonna hold the path.
Wind blowing your way when they're fixing it up.
I'm just going down.
Snowmobile trailer.
Yep.
All right. Uh, LI and general business. So we're, we're moving along, and this, this is only meant to help us get off the dime. All right, cannabis event organizer. Again, this is a separate licensed situation. They can be held by a variety, where do I say this? Uh, many others are allowed to participate and be licensed as an event organizer. So once a month, once a quarter, once a year, whatever the number is, uh, I first heard, we all agree, they're gonna have to go through an interim use permit process. And so that's a month lead notice. They have to tell us how many people are involved. They can change it up to within so many days prior. Uh, so there's a lot of stuff there. This is all sold and on display, but none of the businesses, retail, mezzo, or micro, or the event organizers, can give away samples to anybody. Other retailers, other wholesalers, they can't give them to consumers. Um, and my last point, under that category F under event, is it appears cities can restrict temporary events. Um, oh, not that one. We may or may not allow onsite consumption. That is subject to ultimate determination. Again, it says that in this model ordinance, um, that you can get, or Eleanor can send to you, just like the guidelines that Scott mentioned. Uh, they're all available. That's where it says it. There's a yellow highlight that says cities can make that. I don't see that in the statute. And so that's my personal question, uh, and we don't have any legal direction on that. But let me ask, if these events are gonna be held at some other licensed facility, a retail store, a microbusiness out by Sue, is there a reason, if you concede that you're gonna allow those in those districts, that you wouldn't allow for a four-day period the consumption? It's just a policy question. It's up to you. If it turns out you can't, then you can't. But if you can, I'm curious, would you allow that in these events, regardless where they're held?
But we also, you, you're asking where, what district we should allow it to be held also.
Um, it appears that we can restrict temporary events to be held at other licensed cannabis facilities.
Oh, I see, okay.
So if you've got several of them on Lake Drive, be it a, a, a mezzo business, now that'd probably be the only one, or wholesaler, if a wholesaler was out there. The, the question that I can't answer today is whether we can restrict the edibles. It, it, it says, and it tells them how to have security, separate entrance, everything regarding the onsite consumption, but then the model ordinance says cities can decide whether they're going to allow the consumption. Let's just say we can. Would you permit it, or would you not? Or would you want to go back and revisit every one of these licensed facilities and decide that question on a temporary four-day potential consumption based on the zoning district it's located in? I'm gonna put the business hat on and say, if I'm gonna host one of these events, because I know five other manufacturers, and I know they got some stuff that'll knock your lights out, and whatever, uh, these people are all going to want to be able to have consumption. Having said that, I don't see anywhere in the statutes that any of the consumption anywhere is anything other than edibles. So you drink it, or you chew it. There's no leaf, and none of these onsite consumption areas can have tobacco, and they can't have alcohol. And so you're not talking about smoking parlors. It's, it's edibles.
So thank you, Dean. Um, Rob, so question now on how are, how are bars getting away with already serving this? I mean, they've been serving it for now, a while now.
It's the, it's the, it's the low potency hemp.
Yeah.
Which we're not regulating. So you can go over to, uh, go over to Holiday and...
Right.
And get the low potency. Right now, it's not being regulated, and one of the potential rule changes that the state is thinking is that, whoa, we, we better put these under our wing and, and come up with a new level of regulation, and there's an outcry that it's already been here.
Yeah.
Why are you messing with it? So there are strict limits on what, uh, whether it's a bar, or it's a gas station, or, you know, any retail can sell. So it's very low potency.
I think it's like 25 milligrams?
I, I can't quote the numbers, and I, I can't tell you the difference between Delta 8 and Delta 9, and I, there's too much stuff.
I bring it up because there's places I've ate lunch before, like there's a bar in Minneapolis called Seven Corners, and they got it hanging right on the wall.
Yep.
You can buy it.
And, and right now, the only way that can be sold is as the low potency. There's a definition of what that is. Uh, so whether it's consumable, you know, in a bottle, or in a gummy, or some other, they're legal, but they're very mild.
Sure.
My daughter said, I've drank a case of that stuff, and finally went to the doctor so I could get the real deal. That's the difference. Once these are done, the question is, if somebody's making, uh, they've got their own brewery, and they can serve the low potency, can we expand the liquor license to allow the higher levels of cannabis?
Sure.
I have, I have no clue where that's going. But right now, just about anywhere you can buy low potency drinks and gummies.
It doesn't have the THC.
No, it does. No, it does.
It has a rating, but it is extremely low. And if you read the definition, lower potency, it says it is not a drug. And that can't be said about the higher potency cannabis products. They're considered a drug, and right now, they are administered only through prescription. We got away with, without prescriptions for alcohol, and now they're doing this with cannabis. Is one better than the other? Again, I don't have an opinion. Forty years ago, I'd have been, I'd have done anything to be where we're at today. Today, I don't care, especially having tried some. It doesn't work for me.
Dean, going back to the event they're going to have, so they have a four-day...
Maximum four day.
Maximum four day, come and see the new line of products and all this. So, and the question is if we're going to give them, allow them to give out tastes?
Nothing's given, no samples, no nothing. But they would buy a product, it has all products, no matter what facility, an event, micro-business, that's entitled to have any onsite consumption. They have to sell you a bag of gummies, or they sell you a bottle of THC. You can't...
So the question is if we're allow them to drink that then, or eat it there?
Right. And it can't be in the retail area. They have to set up a separate, secured area adjacent to the retail. And where the samples are in a retail area is not where the product is cut. So at a minimum, these facilities have, I'll say, three rooms. The storage room, where everything sold is located, a sample room, where all you can do is look at it. They do take the jar off the leaf, and you can smell it and go, oh, man, that's good stuff. But you can't touch it, you can't taste it, and they can't give it away. And so at these events, you would go in the retail area and go through the sample area, but you're not tasting, you're buying. And then you go outside and you say, this one's good, this one's okay, this one's whatever, and then you go back and buy more. That's the concept.
So what I'm driving at is every time I go to the liquor store, they're sampling something that says that Bill's liquor. And so the new Beaujolais is here, do you want to try this?
Yeah.
And they give you a little thing of it and slam it.
Prohibited. No cannabis, free samples.
Yep, but I mean, it's basically the same thing, right?
Yeah, I'm not arguing other than the rules are clear. No giveaways. You can't have a wholesaler giving a retailer a product. They have to sell it. And you can't give, you can't give any samples away to customers to entice them.
Like they do at the liquor store. Like they do at the liquor store, they give it to you right there. But you can't do that here.
No, you can't do that.
That's fine. I mean, it's in the big picture, what's the difference?
Yeah.
You got a shot of Jack Daniel's, and you got a gummy bear.
So as you say, put it in your perspective. You're used to that, you see that. Outside of not being free, the purpose of these events is for somebody to go, and they'll buy one, two, three, and then they go into the consumption area and try it. And they go, well, this is really good. But they can't buy a product and smoke it there.
Right.
So it's limited to a drink or a chewable product.
Edible.
Well, I say allow them to do it then.
Yep, I agree.
It's, what's the difference? It's the law.
And in what district? Name as retail?
I'm assuming, again, there's no clear direction, that first of all, somebody that's not a licensed facility can't come and ask for an event. It's got to be one of the, so you may never have any if you don't have any licensed facilities. I raised that before. If you are going to make that decision to allow these use onsite, is it then dependent on, and here, I'll go back to Sue, and we say, well, you know, we're not going to have retail out there, we're not going to have the micro-business, because that is kind of onsite consumption. But if you had a medical use or a mezzo business, and they wanted to have an event, would you object to onsite consumption?
I think that would be fine.
Okay. I'm hearing consensus that you would allow events to have onsite consumption and not being district sensitive. It'd be any district.
Does you, just to prove that at least...
And we still set the parameters for it, so the show can start at 10:00 in the morning, and they're done at 5:30 or 6:00 at night? I mean, it's not like a pot fest all night or anything?
Um...
We have the control of that.
Well, what I was going to say is we could possibly, we would know about when these happen, because they'd have to come in for a permit.
You'd have 30-day notice.
30 days. So we could notify the sheriff's office that, hey, this event is going on, you know, please monitor that area a little bit more than normal. Something like that.
Okay.
And it's not like the people are going to come squealing out of there after they drank a keg of beer. They come out driving five miles an hour, looking at the lights and...
Yeah, but the music and all that stuff might be too loud.
Say that again.
Led Zeppelin, when they're playing the music, might be too loud. So you understand the liquor ramifications, you know, nobody, they're going to lose their insurance carrier if they serve somebody that's already drunk. You read that in the paper all the time. The same thing applies here, but this...
Except you can't tell.
You can't, I don't know how you can tell, but the language is in there. So the statute says somebody can't knowingly sell to someone that's already intoxicated. Well, the key is knowingly. And so there's a potential to over-serve. Are these, you know, are we letting more people out on the road that are potentially killing others? I don't know. The stats don't show anywhere near cannabis problems with drunk driving. I mean, they just don't compare. I think you have trouble talking, and a cop around would probably say, you've been smoking, man? Because people start to babble before they're incapable of driving. I mean, that's what literature I get, and it's not technical.
Yeah, it's very stark.
Okay. Wholesaler.
Super truckers.
We talked about it, Lake Drive.
Yep.
Is that like a mezzo business? A wholesaler belongs down with other potential trucking and other things?
Absolutely.
Light industry and general business?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then transporter, we had them allowed in Lake Drive along with service, delivery service. They don't have to be connected with any business, and I think if somebody was going to make a living on delivering cannabis products, they're going to need a lot of businesses to, otherwise, you're going to have to go pick up the stuff yourself. That's my sense. But is there a restriction you'd want to see? I mean, a delivery business would be like a taxi business. Is that any district? A transporter, less frequent? Box trucks, like Janet asked earlier, is my guess.
Okay, Dean, if you're growing an indoor building, do you also have to have this transporter license? So you've got 1,000 plants, and you buy 500, I got to bring them over to your greenhouse?
Right. So at a minimum, if you're going to allow a wholesaler in District X, you'd want the transporter there too, because a wholesaler and a cultivator can also be a transporter.
A transporter.
So I think there's, you know, you got to have it in the same district. So wholesale, are you relegating perhaps, again, to general business and light industry?
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Same with the transporter, right?
Transporter, if I go back and double-check, you'd want them associated in the same district as the mezzo. And yes, in the freeway corridor, that would actually be light industry and general business. You're not going to have a retailer who can operate a delivery service. I mean, I just can't imagine.
Okay, but we're thinking of it as a delivery service. I'm thinking of it, if I've got a big greenhouse, I got to have a van.
No.
To go to the airport and get the seedlings and...
There's two. A transporter goes to the manufacturer and the wholesaler. The delivery service is a retail function. And I think what you're going to have is a delivery service that is taking orders in many different businesses and doing that delivery, not associated. But potentially, you're talking about somebody having their station wagon, they can't be marked, none of these vehicles can be marked with any cannabis, it could be the name of the company, but it could be an employee of a retail store that makes a delivery, just like the pizza place.
Could that be somebody that's working out of a home occupation?
It could be, I mean, you know.
Well, so I wanted to clarify, and that makes sense, that they would go to the individual buildings, but would we be talking about a business that has a location, and they have all the delivery trucks, and then they're dispatched from this place? You know what I mean?
I think as a transporter, that is a possibility. Is it a likelihood? I think the transporters and the delivery are going to be associated either with one or more of these other licensed businesses.
Okay.
That, and again, I'm just guessing.
I don't know, yeah.
So I could see a transporter being a trucking company that's going to get a license, like they have to have a permit to haul beer or anything like that?
Yep.
And I see that more as a for-hire transportation company. And we might have existing trucking companies within a city already that may apply for that permit to do that.
But would we restrict, I'll just use, like someone said, Bergens are like Forest Lake Floral, right? They deliver things, or how are we going to regulate that? Or are we going to regulate it? Or like somebody said, DoorDash is doing it now.
Yeah, and I think if somebody was doing this on a multi-business basis, multi-non-cannabis basis, but one of their customers or clients was cannabis, we don't know how that would evolve, but the state is very clear what the requirements are. They can't have advertising that mentions anything about cannabis. They got to have certain insurance, and on and on and on. So it could be any of these opportunities. It could be a Manpa home business, it could be, I mean, I'm guessing if it met the requirements, they could call, you know, any of the, any of the car businesses. I mean...
It could literally be DoorDash.
Or Uber.
Call Uber, any number of them. And if you're in a real high market, you might be able to go and visit seven, eight retail stores that are within a, let's say, a four-square-mile area. Well, we don't, we're not going to have that here. And that would be a whole separate business where somebody knocks on the doors and says, I'd like to do delivery, but I need five or six of you to do this. We don't know. But the state regulates what the vehicle looks like or can't look like, what the insurance is, and so forth. Beyond that, they don't, they're not restricting that it can't be used to deliver flowers. So I've got transport in light industry, general business, medical, and testing. We talked about either of those in Lake Drive. I don't know why you wouldn't allow them in the light industry, general business, in the freeway.
Yep.
Okay, and then medical, same, both testing and medical?
Yep.
Okay. We covered them.
Anything else you need?
No, having initial...
Do you want to talk about CUP versus IUP?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear anybody object that you're not going to allow any interim, or excuse me, any permitted uses. So we're going to package all of these as conditional use with the exception of the events.
But one of the things I'm concerned about is, again, early days, conditional use permits are forever. Why can't we just say for now it's IUPs? So you can renew them every five years or whatever we come up with, and we have a better sense of what's going on, what the landscape is?
Oh, you mean all the other businesses, not just the event license?
Yeah.
Well, you raised the question about...
Because once you give them a CUP, then that's forever.
Investors and getting loans and stuff like, it's very hard for somebody to get a loan for a new business.
It's hard for them to get a loan to do this anyways because of what I brought up. But I'm just, I think that that's, you know, we talk about that. It passes on, so you will never get rid of it. And if it turns on to be a monster, I just think in the early days, it's more prudent to go with an IUP.
You know, again, this is consensus. It can fall into the category of interim use. We use that for a longer-term use, like the billboards, which I'm glad you did. Because as time went on, for those of you that felt, you wanted to get rid of some, you have that opportunity. For traditional business, and this is where I'll agree with Bill, it is hard to finance things. And so you be the, you be the decision-makers that, so what, this is a new thing, we're not comfortable with it, we don't care if you have trouble financing, we want to go interim use. If you make that decision, I'd pick a term that is at least reasonable to the extent of somebody being able to get some financing.
My understanding is it's hard to finance these because of the problem with the conflict between state and federal law.
And what happens...
The banks won't do it. The banks won't do it.
Yeah, and so what you get are investors.
Yes.
And you can certainly get a criminal component, but, you know, building the apartments was a series of different investors looking at packaging the money, and you don't go to the bank, because they didn't, they didn't, the banks won't like your rent structure, they won't like how many amenities you're putting, all these reasons. And so I think a lot of this is going to be based on investments, but, you know, there may be Joe Blow that applies for a retail license because he's selling tobacco in a little tiny part of a commercial center somewhere. I see that happening. Are all banks going to turn them down? I have no idea. I'm not smart enough to know that. And you may, you may be right.
And I don't know that anybody knows anything right now. That's the part that makes me scared.
As long as they have been in other facilities, I think what you're going to find is, an ambitious bank has convinced all the other stalwart banks that we're not going to worry about what the feds are doing. They've obviously turned our back, their back on this, and we're going to, we're going to bankroll you. But well, something similar to this is the solar industry. Banks don't want to give you a loan for solar. However, there are, there are banks, like for one example, it's called EnterBank, all they do is loans for solar and wind power. Because the regular banks don't want to do it, but these, these places will, and you will see banks that will line up to help with investors. Banks aren't going to stay out of it, it's money.
Well, I think they legally can't. I mean, it may be that there's other, like you said, venture capitalist groups or whatever, that investing groups that can do it, but I think, I think at this point, the banks, a traditional bank can't legally finance these businesses. That's part of the problem.
A personal bank, you're right, they're not going to. But a business bank...
No, I don't mean a personal, I mean a traditional bank that has to abide by federal law.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm just throwing it out there. I would feel better about IUPs, but we should talk about it.
Let's talk about it. And everything that we've done and all the conclusions that we'll summarize and get back to you are subject to your reconsideration, all of you. What do the rest of you think about IUP, not CUP, for any of these 11 businesses?
So I'm thinking that, I mean, I kind of agree with Janet that we don't know yet. But I agree with you that would, if we did IUP, it would at least have to be a term, not just five years, but long enough that they could get financing. But my other question is, can we spend some time doing a little research on the other states and how they are permitting them?
I like that idea, because I've, I know people who live in some of these states, and you'll hear different things. Some say it's working great, some say it's a disaster, so, and I don't know what the difference is between them, but it would be good to get some of that information.
Yeah, and I can tell you from the summary that Scott referenced this guide, this guidance document that the state put out, it's very traditional. They don't, they don't suggest at all interim anything. It's either... It's either permitted or conditional use, and so-
Well, they're a little biased, too.
Well, and I don't know that. I don't know that it's a summary of other states. But let's, this, that's kind of final touches on the bigger issues in my mind. And so what kind of schedule do you want to think about coming up?
I think once a month, till we get this ready. It's almost December in my world.
Oh, yeah.
You know how fast it'll go.
You know, if we got a document and we're gonna hold a public hearing, that's gonna have to be like between Thanksgiving and Christmas in order to adopt it and make it effective by January 1.
Yeah.
And I don't, I think that deadline's gonna shift, but if everything falls into place, I don't want us to be caught with our pants down. And so minimum, once a month. And I, we never can predict what is on the agendas. And so, you know, if you wanted to consider the first, like this month, the first Wednesday-
The 21st. Do we have anything?
We do have a public hearing for a CUP at the next meeting coming up? Is that what we're talking about, the 21st in two weeks?
Isn't there a truck wash? Public hearing coming up?
There is a business CUP public hearing on the 21st.
After Labor Day?
We do the 4th.
Do this every first Wednesday of the month?
Every first Wednesday of the month?
And if we have to pick up speed, every other Wednesday of the month?
Yep.
It's only three meetings.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
When is it?
We can start looking into issues like wastewater, other solvent usage. I did not read in detail any of the limitations that the state's putting on. And I know that that'll be in the final rules. What other states are doing in the permitting process, like, I want to say, we're gonna be on the conservative end of that. And so while we'll do that research and try and come up with a handful of states on what that permitting process is, the issue's gonna be, it's not what the states are doing, it's what each community's doing. And I don't know if you get a broad representation that in Montana, it's this way, because individual cities would be making that decision if they're comparable to us. But we'll pursue that. And, you know, there's 65 people now in a brand-new State Department that was created to oversee this. And I heard through somebody else that had talked to somebody there, I haven't even found a phone number. So I've emailed him twice and asked questions, and I haven't gotten an answer back in a week on either. But they indicated that half of those people were there full-time researching what all the other states did. And again, from a state level, we're not gonna get the answer that you just asked, because that's a city decision in all of these communities. But we'll come back. And ultimately, you can do what you want and base it on the best information that you have. And again, you'll fulfill the requirements of the law if you said all of these have to be done by interim use, because we just don't know what's going on. If they don't like it, you've met the law. That's your permitting prowess. Somebody else might come back and say, "You know what? You started eliminating all of your interim uses, because you thought it was silly and everything's a conditional use, why aren't we that?" Well, they're gonna have to sue you. At least you got insurance and somebody can cover you, and you got time to think, and then you change your evidence. That's a non-legal opinion.
Yeah.
What day was that? Somebody said, the 4th?
Was it September 4th? September 4th would be the first Planning Commission meeting, that I don't have, like, a public hearing scheduled. If we wanted to pick a different date, that is also-
And we don't have to go to always the 1st.
Yeah.
It's just easier for everybody to mark something on their calendar for at least two, three months. Okay.
First of the month? Is this census?
I think workshop.
First workshop of the month?
I think workshop might be better.
Well, we got a workshop today before.
When?
Well, this is for the council, I think.
Or the 3rd?
Yeah, September.
Didn't you try to change that, Jack?
I would rather do it the 4th.
I thought you tried to change that workshop.
Because Fall Fest-
Because it was right after Labor Day.
The 18th.
We didn't change that one.
The 20th.
Did not change it?
So I would rather do it the 4th.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I'm gonna be around, but I thought you were trying to change it, because it was right after Labor Day.
The one that we changed is relative to the 4th of July, but we did not change the one for Labor Day.
Okay.
I guess what I'm saying, Lynn, is the council's got a workshop today before.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to tie up two days in a row. Bob?
Happens most months.
Yeah, they would be tied up days, because they have to be there that day anyway. They have to be out there on the 4th, because that's a regular Planning Commission meeting.
I'm looking at the 18th, because Fall Fest is that weekend, and that's just gonna be a really busy-
But we wouldn't be looking at the 18th of September?
Yeah. So that's why I'm saying I would rather do the 4th.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm just talking to the other council members, that they want to do two days in a row, come on here to meet.
Are we-
It's fine with me.
Do August 21st?
It's not whining. But it might be-
What's on the schedule for the workshop?
We have not set the agenda for that yet, but if that's gonna be the major item, that'll be on the workshop agenda.
Can we make that? Since we don't have an agenda set, can we just make that third meeting a joint meeting, huh? Is that...
Well, with the-
Or is there something else we gotta knock out, like our budget, or?
We could call, I mean, we can call a special meeting at any time, or we could make a special meeting as part of our workshop meeting. Is that on the, what, the 4th run?
The 3rd.
The 3rd.
But then we'd have a joint meeting you're talking about.
Or we could have our meeting, then have a joint meeting after. I feel like we've kind of went through the nuts and bolts of it, it's just kind of some cleanup stuff, right? Is, are we-
I feel like it should be joint on-
Yeah.
No, I'm saying maybe we have our city council, and then after, maybe we have the Planning Commission come in, and then we cover that portion. Two separate meetings, but the same night? Or is that not enough time?
Well, how about the Planning Commission people? Because you would have to come in Tuesday the 3rd and Wednesday the 4th for your regular Are you guys willing to do two nights in a row?
That's fine with me.
Or we just leave it alone. We could just leave it alone, just go with what we got. We'll have a joint.
I don't care.
We'll just come in.
Two days in a row?
It was just the council members, I didn't, it doesn't bother me, I should be back.
You should be back. So are we doing, you're going out of town?
I'm going looking for marijuana, so.
Going to Michigan, huh?
You don't have to go far.
All right. So are we still okay with the joint meeting being the 4th of September, regular Planning Commission meeting? Is that what I was hearing?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Perfect. On my schedule.
We're gonna do the 4th.
Can you send out a calendar envelope? No, I'm just kidding.
We'll send it out.
So there'll be a regular Planning Commission on the 18th, correct?
Oh, thank you for bearing with me. This is overwhelming.
No kidding.
And then joint meetings.
They just want to have a joint.
It is a new meeting for a joint.
I know. I've been making that joke a lot.
You're bringing-
You're bringing the treat.
The joint, and then it's me. Gummies.
Yeah. You're bringing the treat.
There'll be sleep gummies.
I don't think I could handle it.
Okay.
Never know, Barb, you might like it.
Yeah.
Tell you guys a joke off flying another city council member's-
I'm a different generation.
No.
Are we done?
I'll think of that. So Dean, are you done spreading joy?
Nope, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
You need a motion to-
Motion to adjourn, Scott.
So now we go to Planning Commissioners' report.
Oh, sorry.
Anybody have anything? Robin?
Bethany?
I do not.
Thanks, Bethany.
Okay. City Administrator Report?[1754.41]